Good evening and welcome to our beautiful Austin Independent School District Performing Arts Center, which was funded by the 2008 bond. In compliance with Chapter 551 of the Texas, I call to order a regular voting meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent School District for Thursday, August 22 at 6:08 PM. A quorum of the board is physically present at District's Performing Arts Center to conduct this meeting. This meeting is streaming live on AISD TV and Apple TV. It is also being broadcast on Cable Channel 22 through Spectrum, a Stalin broadband, and on Channel 99 through AT&amp;T U-verse. Closed captioning in English is available for those or on these platforms for individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing. Welcome and thank you for joining us. I want to acknowledge that we are not in our normal location for tonight's board meeting. The district posted an amended agenda posting today in accordance with Texas Government Code Section 551.0411 due to an unexpected power outage at Central Office. We will expect to be back in our board auditorium for the next meeting on September 20th. Excuse me, September 12th. Our first item is the President's Report. President Singh is with us, but I don't want to put her on the spot unless she's ready for it. All right. So the board is excited to have our students back in school this week. Tuesday was our first school day, but it was absolutely not without challenges. Keeling Middle School had an unexpected delay due to a fire, but the community and staff rose to the occasion, offering opportunities for students in the gym, lunches, and I know we're all excited for the Keeling Hornets' first day of school next Monday. And I know the kids are really sad that they missed their first day of school.
Oh, they were, definitely.
Correct. Just this Monday, our board voted to call for a tax rate election, which is referred to as a VADER. We encourage the public to learn more about the election this November on our website, While this election is going on, the district is also working hard to find efficiencies and alignment in our budget to address our long-term budget needs and deficit. Last year, the district made $30 million in cuts without touching campuses. The board held a retreat last week to discuss priorities as part of our long-term budget work. Out of the conversation over many of the priorities and guardrails we need to consider, five were identified to be included in a rubric. This rubric will be used by the administration and our new Joint Community Long-Term Budget Committee in reviewing and evaluating all potential cuts. Those five priority areas are ensure cuts in any area are equity-driven. In our retreat, that was a resounding first in terms of trustees' sort of consensus. The second was considering the long-term impact of cuts reductions. The third was ensure that the teacher's voice has been heard in our decisions. Next was center literacy in terms of its alignment to student outcomes. Fifth was listen to the people impacted before cuts are final. The board also discussed other priorities important to the district, including limiting impact to programs that are important to Austin, identifying high-leverage programs for preservation, and recognizing the unique needs of our campuses. All of this reinforces the need for our budget decisions to be equity-driven. The Joint Committee is meeting next Tuesday in a public online meeting, and they will take part in an equity essential training to help guide their work. The public is welcome to join this meeting and future meetings. They'll be held each Tuesday through September at 5:30. Links will be available on the district calendar and the district website. Finally, as part of the TEA-approved order and work with Lone Star Governance, the district has implemented a staff use time tracking system aligned with LSG that records estimates of time spent on trustees, meetings, and events. This will be available to trustees and will be reported out in a public meeting next year. For this past year, it'll be reported out in a public meeting next year for what happened last year. This is also aligned with the state law that requires the district to report out and share with TEA the number of requests by trustees and the total cost to the district for responding to trustees. For the '23-'24 school year, the trustees submitted 214 information requests, which included 1,024 individual questions. Based on the district cost estimates for public information, this amounts to $6,420. This data will be shared with TEA. Our next item is committee reports. We've posted the written committee report as an attachment to this item on our Board Doc's agenda. This includes a committee report for the Austin Education Fund. That concludes the President's Report, and the next item is the Superintendent's Report. Mr. Segura.
Good evening, trustees. Vice President Foster, very much appreciate being here this third day of school. And for tonight, for the presentation, I would like to share a video that captures some of the amazing moments from the first two days of school. Our students and staff are just amazing. I'm so excited to share this video with all of you. And Jacob, could you bring it up? Are you gonna have fun?
I am.
Oh, that's awesome. Have a great day, okay? Are y'all super excited about today?
Yeah!
Now, y'all are still asleep. Are you really excited about today?
Yeah!
Let's go! What's going on? Ready for Covington Middle School, first day of school? It's gonna be awesome. I actually went here, fun fact. So many memories here. I absolutely love, 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 love coming back. How's it going, sir? Doing well, doing well. Feel good about this trip?
Yes, I'm excited.
Now, they haven't even had a chance to rehearse yet, man. It's the first day. About a fourth of them from Burnet, so we'll see what you get. So, ready? Here we go, here we go.
This is Evelyn and Yaritza, and they're gonna be taking care of you today.
Awesome, awesome. Well, yes, thank you all for having me. I'm super excited.
So, how may I help you today?
I'd like to get a haircut.
Okay.
I'm pretty boring. Like, I wear a suit a lot of the times, so I always part it here. It's really straight, so it has to be a little bit longer on top, or else it just, like, sticks up like a porky fine.
It looks good.
Like, I have been known to fall asleep while I'm getting a haircut. We're not gonna fall asleep now because conversation's great, but... Let's go! Look at this, it's awesome! All right, all right, you got this?
No, I do not!
There we go. Oh my God! Let's go, let's go. That was awesome. That was awesome.
Okay, wait, wait. So, our general counsel's Manny Petty was awesome at Nevada Cosmetology. I wanna see your nails, Kenneth. And the slow walk that the editor had with trustee Lugo and Matias at Covington Middle doing the classic stuff, that was awesome. That was awesome. Thank you for that.
I appreciate that, Vice President Foster. Certainly, I want to express my gratitude for trustees showing up. You know, I've always had, you know, my back, and, you know, y'all being there with me over the last two days meant a lot to our staff, meant a lot to our families. Couple funny stories. You know, there was one moment where trustee Willie Chu and I, I'm gonna share the story. We were working hard. I mean, we were, like, in the weeds when it came to serving students. And we were, we probably did a good 20 minutes of, like, solid work. Nowhere near the efficiency of our awesome staff. But we were about to, she said, "We did it, it was awesome, we didn't make a mistake." And like, as she said that, her hand was lifted and flipped over this whole plate. And it was, like, the perfect timing, it was awesome. But, you know, she was just so great and just, it was awesome. Trustee Lugo, we went to multiple schools together. We got to get on the intercom and welcome all of our students to Covington Middle School. Trustee Boswell and I spent time at O'Henry, got to participate in a big tug-of-war, just really getting all the energy and getting the students to see each other, spend time with each other, and really begin to build relationships. And then trustee Gonzalez, you know, at Manchaca, you know, right off the bat, was awesome. So just a really incredible experience, a lot of, you know, really great things. I think the energy is there, climate and culture is continuing to improve. Again, you know, we're 97% staffed, you know, for the first time in a long time. We hired, you know, less than 5% of principals in previous years, and I think we're really seeing kind of that take place in our organization. The other thing I wanted to briefly mention, and this is kind of a shout-out to Burnet. You know, when we were in the class, the guitar class, and I don't think anybody does it, I'm gonna say this, there was a moment where the teacher was kind of sharing with me that, you know, the students had just come together for the first day right then. But they were third-years, they were eighth graders, and they began to pretty much do scales. And what was, what I told everybody is, you know, I'm a superintendent, and this is, my job is to make sure that you have what you need. And one of the things that we talked about briefly was the guitars. And what was just an eye-opening moment for me was, he told me that the guitars that they had were brand-new, but that he had had them in storage for about a year and a half, maybe almost two years. And the reason being was that the Fine Arts Program or the guitar program itself at Burnet hadn't grown. It didn't have enough students, and it had essentially quadrupled in the last year and a half. And so just kind of reinforcing and just showing, like, how big of an impact, you know, the work that we do as an organization has and the investments that y'all approve and our community supports and approves as well, like, has a meaningful impact on our students. So that was incredible to see. Also, I want to acknowledge, you know, Keeling Middle School, you know, wasn't the start that we would have hoped. But the community has come together, our staff has come together, our principal, Principal Estes is amazing. The team, you know, we worked all through the night, the night before school started. We made some difficult decisions, but I think we made them in a transparent way. We communicated early, provided the resources as best we could to staff. We made decisions with input from staff, and I think they're well-positioned to have a great start to the year on Monday. So just wanted to share those points. Thank you, trustees. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay, so...
I can go to the next one.
Okay, go ahead.
So now I'd like to continue the Superintendent's Update. I'd like to invite Dr. Jacob Reach, our Chief Officer of Government Relations, and Katrina Montgomery, our interim Chief Financial Officer, to provide the budget update. And again, this is a continued commitment of the administration to provide updates throughout the year, both on our transformation initiative, but also just on the regular budgeting process. So, team, I'll hand it away.
Good afternoon, President Singh, trustees, Superintendent Segura. Dr. Reach and I are here to present a budget update today. And this first slide is a timeline, and it gives next steps. So you've seen this timeline before. We presented when we talked to our community, and it's giving the first steps from May 16, where we started our efficiency study with Moak Casey, all the way through November 5, which is the election day. So, the budget team, we're in the process of doing two audits, and we have them here on this slide. The first one is the efficiency audit, and the efficiency audit is being done by Moak Casey and Associates. The efficiency audit looks at our district as well as other states and gives comparisons on accountability, staffing, and finance, and students. The second audit that we're going through currently is the Gibson Cost-Saving Audit. And so that audit is gonna give some analysis as well as some potential suggestions on savings. The efficiency audit, we plan to present to the board in September, and then the Gibson Consulting, the overview to the board, will be in October. So this slide here, we're gonna go through it one by one. This slide, we're gonna talk about what's going on for FY '24-'25, the revisions from the time that we adopted the budget. And then on the next slide, we're gonna have the exact, the numbers that go with this slide. So in April of 2024, we received our preliminary property values from Travis County Appraisal District. And at that point, it told us that our property growth would be 6%. In June 2024, the board passed and accepted the budget that was given. In July of 2024, we received our updated certified property values from TCAD, which is Travis County Appraisal District. And at that point, it said our property value growth would be 1%. And so the estimated net loss during that time will be $14 million, but we'll talk more about that on the next slide. In August, we got some vacancy projections that had to be updated. Ms. Hosack and her team have been doing a wonderful job at filling our vacancies, so we had to update our vacancy numbers, our projections. And then in August, because of the things we just talked about above, we have to increase our reductions to meet the 20% board policy for fund balance. So here's the numbers that kind of go through everything that we just talked about. In the far-left column, we have the adopted budget, and so this is the column that we're all very, very familiar with. When you hear we talk about the $78 million deficit that was passed, so all of us are comfortable there. So the revised budget numbers, let's go through those a little bit. So because of the difference in the TCAD numbers from the 6% to the 1%, there's a revenue decrease of approximately $25 million. And then there's our recapture also decreases. So the net of those is $14 million. And then in vacancy savings, we had budgeted a $20 million vacancy saving. And now we want to be a little bit more conservative with what's going on in leadership with our talent strategy team, so that number will go to $8 million. And because of those changes, previously, we had said in the left column that we needed to have reductions of $37 million to get us to the 21.65 of unassigned fund balance. So now that number increases to $44 million, and that will get us to the 20% fund balance approved by the board. And on this last slide, we want to talk about some of our financial ratings. We just want to make sure that we come before the board and assure the board how we're doing. There are four rating agencies that have reviewed us: Fitch, Crowe, Moody's, and S&amp;P. S&amp;P, we just went through the ratings like a week, a week and a half ago, and we received their top rating, so we're very proud of that. And we've talked a little bit about the first rating, which is the Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas. We've also received our preliminary numbers that show that we will be at superior and have a 94 rating. And that's everything for the presentation today. Do you have any questions for us?
Trustees, any questions? Yes, Secretary Boswell.
I'd like to understand, thank you for all of this. Want to be sure we have a really clear understanding of the big numbers that have changed. Nice to see our recapture go down, that is always a pleasant surprise. And I really want to understand that vacancy savings different. Is that because we are fully staffed and expect to remain that way?
Yes, that's part of it. That's it, the vacancy savings, yes.
Okay, which is, so it's a good problem to have in terms of our students and a hard problem to have financially, that it changes our outlook.
It changes our outlook, but I do want to kind of reinforce, this is a kind of conservative starting point. You know, Katrina and I talked about this earlier today. You know, over the course of the year, we expect that to move in a direction that nets us an increase.
Okay.
But yes, you know, trustee, Chief Hosack has been doing a tremendous job, and, you know, it's there for a reason. But yes, you're exactly right, it does impact us adversely.
Okay, perfect. And then the unidentified reductions, we need to find more than we thought we did.
Yes, $7 million or more.
So, to be clear, and I want to, the number that we have now is still less than what we were projecting to cut as part of this process. So just to be clear to everybody in the community, this has not changed our approach, has not made it to where we're cutting more earlier. The path that we were on still is, can still be supported and addressed this. It's just that the amount that's required to maintain the 20% has changed. But our position the entire time is we're gonna get above that. I think 48 was the goal for this fiscal year, and that's still...
So that number stays the same?
That still stays the same, correct.
Okay, thank you for that, I appreciate that. And then, understanding why even though our recapture has gone down, we don't get that boost, and that's not showing up in the amount, by reducing the amount we have to cut, part of the reason that recapture's down is because we took in less as well.
Right, recapture's down because revenue's down, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
And I think it's really important that we talk about the fact that the assumption that was provided in our adopted budget was directly from the Travis County Appraisal District in April. You know, we actually went back and, like, what was this number that we received? And it was right at 6%. Fast forward several months, everything comes back certified, and it's 1%. So I just want to be very, very clear that we were relying on information that's provided to us, not an assumption that we built in based on a previous projection.
Yes, I appreciate you bringing that back, because I know we haven't talked about that in a while, and I think that is a question people have asked, is how did it grow so much? And I think that's, it's a very important piece of information to kind of keep in mind and remind people of, that we're always making guesses. And I think good news for a lot of communities, that home prices are lower, but that does impact on a big scale what we have available to us. So thank you for that.
Any other trustees have questions?
I have one, another question about the vacancy savings. So, we, I know that we're having the efficiency audit, we're gonna get that very quickly. And is that going to make recommendations? Like, what should we expect? Is it gonna make recommendations about where we might make staff reductions or combine departments, or what are we anticipating there? That might help as we think about our staffing and how that might be, I don't know if that might be impacted as we, how that might be impacted as we make the budget cuts?
Yeah, so we do expect that the Cost-Savings Audit, which we're doing with Gibson, will provide us suggestions on staffing, staffing levels, and what we could look at based off of other state data. The Efficiency Audit, which is being done by Moak Casey and is a requirement for our VADER, is really more of a comparison to peer districts in the state. It'll provide us helpful information, but it'll not make recommendations.
Okay.
But the Cost-Savings Audit will make recommendations.
Okay, that's helpful. And that one, we're gonna get...
The Efficiency Audit, we actually, it's possible that we'll receive the Efficiency Audit as soon as tomorrow, but I believe next week.
Okay.
The Cost-Savings Audit from Gibson, they're gonna start providing us feedback. They actually did a series of meetings today with some district leaders. And their next step is to start building up a dashboard that we can then utilize and share with our board and share with our committee that's gonna show us a lot of this information that they're analyzing. And then they'll start making suggestions. Their final report will come in October.
Okay, great.
But we'll be getting suggestions from now all the way through the final report.
Okay, great, thank you. Any one else have questions? Okay, cool, thanks.
I do have one other quick question, which is, I know enrollment is looking more promising, and I don't need a figure, but that, again, will increase the funds we have available, correct?
You know, I think one of the things that it definitely does is it confirms our assumption of a minimum of staying, you know, level. I think we're at a point now where we feel very confident that's the case. Based on numbers, we are hopeful, and there is, I guess, enough evidence suggests that we could grow a little bit, and certainly that would have a positive impact. But we're very, very confident that we're made stable.
Excellent, thank you.
And that gave me time to think of another question. And I promise this will be my last one, which is, you had mentioned the $30 million in cuts that we've already done. And those are, Superintendent, those are cuts that have already been executed. It's not just like a number on a sheet of paper, but it was actually cuts.
Correct, yeah. So before we, so when we brought, that was all part of getting from the last budget to the adopted budget, and so those were all taken. I guess what I would say is, some of them are kind of midway through implementation, like, contract reduction, like, we know some of them require some negotiations, that's been ongoing. But we know how to get there, they're already underway. And certainly, when it comes to the staffing positions or any vacancies tied to those numbers, those have already been taken.
Okay, okay. And have we taken this, like, $30 million in cuts in one single year before? Like, I was curious to know.
Jacob may know the answer. The one I can think of is, like, 2011, but I, that was a big, big thing.
Yeah, we took almost $80 million in 2011. We have certainly identified $30 million in a year. I could not promise that we realized $30 million in a year. That would, I'd have to go back and check.
Okay, I would be...
But last year, we realized $30 million at the end of the year.
Okay. I would, I would love to get that confirmed, just so that, you know, I think it's really important for our community to understand that I feel like this is the biggest belt tightening we've done, at least in the five years I've been sitting here, by far. And, and I think that's just really important for our community to understand as well, so thank you.
We can provide that. I mean, I think it'd be helpful, because we're trying to come back continuously. And so at the next meeting, we can definitely do that, and we can send it to the board even prior to that, sometime next week, to do the research.
Great, thank you. Oh, sorry, trustee Gonzalez and then Vice President Foster.
Thank you. So you mentioned that the Joint Advisory Committee is gonna be undergoing equity trading within the coming weeks. When will the board receive an update on the result of the work that that committee's doing?
So, they're gonna meet every Tuesday in September, plus next Tuesday. And I'm just gonna throw in another plug, that those are open to the public. They're all online, so we hope the public can join us and also submit feedback. So thank you for letting me add that in. We hope to start looking through those first two meetings and have them both discuss ideas to review, but also start reviewing ideas, and why we start getting the feedback from those ideas, and we start aligning them with the rubric that trustee Foster touched on earlier with those board priorities. Then we'll start to have information that we can share with the board through written update. And then we are scheduled, is it for the October info session? It's on our calendar. We are, I think it's the October info session. I think we're scheduled for the October info session to give the report out on that final work. But you'll get information after whatever that, I apologize, the calendar, can't think of it off the top of my head, but whatever is that second Tuesday in September.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. I just didn't see it on the timeline.
And just to be clear, one of the things that we're trying to do is not wait to the end to consider it all. Like, that's not gonna be successful, given the scale, given the kind of various areas of exploration. So the idea is to have this be iterative, where as the committee is working through things, we provide updates so that you understand, the board understands, kind of, where we're moving towards, but not actually get to a final recommendation. By the time we get to a recommendation, my hope is that you would have seen it coming. Like, you know, you're not gonna be surprised by it. But the process is iterative. We'll do board updates, we'll do certain information sessions by way of my updates as well. But ultimately, at the end of the day, the final deliverable will...
But ultimately, at the end of the day, the final deliverable will, will be later in September, early October.
Vice President Foster.
Just really quickly, as a sort of point of information, with and without the tax rate increase, what is our guesstimate of the percentage of our revenue that will be recaptured?
You, so without would be 49% and with would be 51%.
So we're ba, we're, we're basically looking at the state taking half of all of our revenue for this upcoming year?
Yeah, e, either way.
Yeah, thank you.
Great, anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, team.
All right, so we will now move to public testimony for items on, on the consent agenda. Tonight, we didn't have any callers to sign up to speak in person or record a message. I think everyone is busy with back to school. So as a reminder, please feel free to share any general comments or questions with the board by email at trustees@austinisd.org. So we will now move to the consent agenda. Trustees, are there any consent items anyone would like to pull for a separate vote? I have a lot longer to look here. On this huge stage, okay. So, all right, so we will move on. All right, Secretary Boswell, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
All right, and do we have a second?
Second.
All right, trustees, is there any discussion on any of these consent items? Okay, so having a motion by Secretary Boswell, this, oh, I'm so sorry.
Briefly, draw people's attention to item 12.1, which is the approval of Disability Rights of Texas Settlement and Release Agreement. And this is something that has been a long time coming. And this is really, really huge for us. It's, you know, when, when I ran for this seat and when I came on the board, this was a top priority to settle this lawsuit. And, you know, disability rights Texas is, is there standing up for, for kids and for families. And, you know, they're not going to be, they were not ready to settle until we were where we needed to be. And I just want to thank, you know, everyone who, who worked so hard to make this happen. You know, our families, our evaluators, our teachers, we're sounding the alarm on this situation. And this is just a huge milestone for, that our administration, that everyone, our board has worked really, really hard to make happen, and it's, this is just a really meaning, you know, this is a part of the consent agenda, but I wanted to, to draw attention to this of just how important this, this settlement is and how grateful that I'm getting to vote on it today.
Thank you, appreciate that. Thank you, Superintendent and Kenneth Walker. Appreciate all your leadership on this. All right, so having a motion by Secretary Boswell to approve the consent agenda items, and a second by Secretary Sapata, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion passes unanimously, thank you. All right, so we will now talk about the abstention items for separate vote. So Secretary Boswell, do we have a motion to approve items 13.1 and 13.2?
Yes, I move to approve items 13.1, Inter, 2024-25 Inter-Local Agreement with the University of Texas for Literacy First District Capacity Building Model, and item 13.2, 2024-25 Renewal of Inter-Local Agreement with the University of Texas for Literacy First.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion on this item? Okay, so having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by Trustee Sapata to approve items 13.1 and 13.2, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, those opposed and those abstaining. Okay, the motion passes with six in favor and zero opposed and one abstention. Wait, did I count correctly? Yes, okay. Okay, we've got two missing. All right, so we will move on then. Secretary Boswell, do we have a motion on item 13.3?
Yes, I move to approve item 13.3, 2024-2025 Austin Community College Grant for Adult Education.
Great. So do we have a second?
Second.
All right, having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by Trustee Sapata to approve item 13.3, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, those opposing and any abstentions? Okay, the motion passes with six in favor, no opposing and one abstaining. All right, Secretary Boswell, do we, and so we'll move now to items for separate vote. Secretary Boswell, do we have a motion to approve item 14.1?
Yes, I move to approve item 14.1, approval of an inter-local agreement between the University of Texas at Austin and Austin ISD for On-Ramps Program.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, trustees, any discussion on this item? Okay, so having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by Trustee Sapata to approve item 14.1, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, the motion passes unanimously. All right, so next on the agenda is Consider and Possible Action of the Lone Star Governance Quarterly and Yearly Evaluation. As we shared at our information session from our LSG coach, Ashley Paz, the board is currently at 66 points, which is above our goal of 60, and it's in the MEAT standard. So I just want to, before we approve that officially, I just want to thank the board for all the hard work that we've put in in the past year. I think TA gave us two years to get to 60, and we got to 66 in, in one year, so great job, yes. I'm very proud of, of the work that we've done and very, lots of hard work with the administration as well. And special shout out to Ashley Paz for guiding us through all of this. All right, so Secretary Boswell, do we have a motion to approve item 15.1?
Yes, I move to approve item 15.1, LSG Quarterly and Yearly Evaluation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Trustees, is there any discussion on this item? Yes, Secretary Boswell.
I just want to clarify, I think my understanding is that now that we've reached this milestone, we need to remain at this milestone for an additional three quarters, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Fantastic. All right, so having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by Trustee Sapata to approve item 15.1, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion passes unanimously, thank you. All right, so we will now recess the open meeting at 6:46 PM and move to executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074, 551.072, 551.073, 551.087, 551.076, 551.0821, and 551.071. When we are finished with the exec session, we will return to the open session to take a vote on the student transfer appeals and hold a retreat on the Austin ISD Academic Vision and Theory of Action Discussion. So thank you all very much. Okay, so we are, we now, we'll now reconvene the open meeting at 10:21 PM. And we need to vote, I apologize, I didn't have my script ready. Okay. Do, so first we will go through the transfer appeals. So we'll start with 18.1A-H. Do I have a motion on agenda item 18.1, the transfer appeal on behalf of AH?
Yes, I move to affirm the decision of the superintendent and deny the relief requested.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, so we will now vote, all those in favor. Oh wait, having a motion by Trustee Boswell and a second by Trustee Whitley Chu to affirm the administration's decision. All those in favor, raise your right hand. The motion passes unanimously. Do I have a motion on agenda item 18.2, the transfer appeal on behalf of ITB?
Yes, I move to affirm the decision of the superintendent and deny the relief requested.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by Trustee Whitley Chu to affirm the administration's decision. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Do I have a motion on agenda item 18.3, the transfer appeal on behalf of AC?
Yes, I move to affirm the decision of the superintendent and deny the relief requested.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, we'll now vote, having a motion by Secretary Boswell to affirm the administration's decision and a second by Trustee Whitley Chu, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All right, the motion passes unanimously, thank you, board members. So we will now adjourn the meeting, so Secretary Boswell, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Before we do that, I'm sorry, so for those of you who are waiting for the academic vision and theory of action discussion, we're actually going to bump that again, and my deepest apologies. But we are going to move that to a later date, and we'll let you all know when that happens. Now, Secretary Boswell, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Now, so moved, yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, having, having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by Trustee Whitley Chu to adjourn. All those in favor, please raise your right hand, the motion passes unanimously, we are adjourned at 10:23 PM, thank you.